Hello. Krista, can you hear me? Angela, Susan.
Justin, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
All right, cool.
Hello. Krista, can you hear me? Angela, Susan.
Fantastic. Good meeting.
Justin, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
All right, cool.
This is a meeting to order at 6:00 PM. This is also our first meeting that will be virtual as well as in person. So with that, there will be no public comments that will be available through Zoom. I would like to remind everyone, there is a sign up sheet at the entrance for those that are here who would like to speak later. And when called upon, you need to come to the podium, state your name and address before you speak. This will be the only opportunity given for public comments this evening. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.23708.2 in the Town's Electronic Participation Policy, Susan Matthias will be joining us remotely tonight via Zoom from the Holiday Inn in Terre Haute, Indiana, as she was caught out of work or out of town on work. Roll call, please, Ms. Hall.
Yes, sir. Mr. Vajak?
Present.
Ms. Hoover?
Yeah.
Mr. Seward?
Here.
Ms. Estes?
Here.
Ms. Matthias?
Present.
And Mayor Jackson?
Present. Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to meet this evening to go over the town's business. We ask for you to protect those that protect us, the police and the military across this great nation. We pray in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
We can have our officers come up here. So first of all, Mr. Hunter, would you like to do the honor, sir?
He brings a lot of talent and a lot of experience. It's more like twins, right?
All right, so while you gentlemen are up here, we're going to have proformation declaring the week of October 11th through 17th, 2021 as Virginia Police Week and Peace Officers' Memorial Day. Whereas the safety and well-being of Virginia is important to the prosperity of Virginia's families and communities. And whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed the first proclamation recognizing May 15th as Peace Officers' Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as National Police Week. And whereas police officers throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia work tirelessly to protect and serve residents across the Commonwealth, enforce our laws, and keep our neighborhoods, schools, and families safe. And whereas police officers report for duty aware of the sacrifices they may be called upon to make and risk their lives each and every day in order to safeguard the public and enforce the laws of the Commonwealth. And whereas we reflect upon the selfless dedication and bravery of our local, state, and other public sector police as our safety and well-being is promoted by their dedication to maintaining peace and security in all of our communities. And whereas Virginia Police Week and Peace Officers' Memorial Day are opportunities to honor officers who have fallen in the line of duty and recognize the sacrifices made by the families of those officers and the families of those who continue to protect and serve our communities. Whereas celebrations will be held the week of October 11th through 17th, 2021 to ensure opportunity for in-person attendance due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And now therefore be proclaimed that I, Kerry Jackson, Mayor of the Town of Dayton, Virginia, and on behalf of the Dayton Town Council and the citizens of Dayton, do hereby recognize October 11th through 17th, 2021 as Virginia Police Week and Peace Officers' Memorial Day in the Town of Dayton. And I call this observation observance, excuse me, to the attention of all residents. And not a day nor a week is enough to thank you for what you guys do day in and day out when we're home sleeping in our beds and you're out there protecting us. So thank you very much for what you do. Now, we have a presentation by Mr. Greg Thomason, who is the Executive Director of HERSA. So the floor is yours, sir.
Come up closer to the microphone so everybody can hear me. Yeah, so as Mayor Jackson indicated, my name is Greg Thomason, and I'm the Executive Director of HERSA. I've been there since July 6th of this year, so I'm relatively new there. Sharon Foley retired at the end of July. I guess just to give you a little bit of background on HERSA, we were formed in July 15th, 1970 by concurrent resolutions from Rocky Hill County, Harrisonburg, Bridgewater, Dayton, Mount Crawford. There are member jurisdictions there who discharge to us. So we were formed to collect and treat wastewater. We were organized under the Virginia Water and Waste Authorities Act, and there are eight members of our Board of Directors. Angela Lawrence is one of our Board of Directors. She serves as Vice Chair right now. To tell you a little bit about us, we have roughly 19.5 miles of sewer interceptors throughout the county, and we operate the North River Wastewater Treatment Facility. And that was, those two projects were completed in 1977, but there's been multiple upgrades of the wastewater treatment plant. We have a service contract and a master bond resolution, or really the documents that we operate under for person, the member jurisdictions. What I'm showing you here is the plant is allowed to discharge 23 million gallons per day is what our VPDS permit, that's what the Environmental Agency allows us to discharge to North River daily. And each one of these are the flow allocations which are given to each one of the localities. Bridgewater is at 1.72 million gallons per day. There's yours. Dayton's at 2.8 million gallons per day. Harrisonburg's 12.8 million gallons. Mount Crawford's only got 80,000 gallons. Rocky Hill County's got 5.6 million gallons. I know you're like, wow, Dayton's got 2.8, that's pretty high, isn't it? For your little town. Well, guess what you got? You got Cargill. So that's why. So what I'm also showing you there is the percent allocation used, and nobody's really very high there. Rocky Hill County was about 51 point, well, you guys are at 65%, but you know, you're well into your allocation, so you've still got room for growth should you need to connect. You're probably thinking, well, how do you keep track of what comes from each place? There's 13 flow metering stations out there. What I kind of gave you on this first sheet, it shows you the locations of our interceptors, and it shows you the metering stations that we have. You guys have three flow, well, we own the flow metering station, and we get constant results from these metering stations. So Dayton, your metering stations, our names for them are Dayton, 42 West, and Cargill. We total up those three metering stations, and we see that constantly at the plant, can tell what's going through all three of those at any given time. Last major upgrade of the plant was capacity and enhanced nutrient removal, and it was completed in December of 2010. The capacity increase, you went from 16 to 22 MGD. The enhanced nutrient removal, that was for DEQ in the Chesapeake Bay. You're required to do total nitrogen and phosphorus limits for the Chesapeake Bay. They're very tight here. One thing you really don't know about the valley is that some of the wastewater treatment plants that are operated up and down and go to Chesapeake Bay are the most advanced plants in the world. You won't find anybody who does quite what we do. It's very interesting. What I thought I'd do, the second sheet is our processes. And so you look at that and go like, wow, that's pretty major. Kind of problems of mine, the funny thing is a lot of our stuff isn't on there because it was never upgraded for some of the solid stuff that was done after this. So it's a pretty complicated process. The one thing that's pretty neat on the site is that they have a virtual tour that Sharon put together, and it's pretty cool. So, and you're always welcome to come out anytime, get ahold of us. We love to give tours to plant because it's a fascinating plant, place. If you ever want to be an engineer, there's no better place to study than that plant. I'll tell you that. So anyway, what I thought I'd do is I'd go through the processes, just basically, and tell you guys how we treat the wastewater. Wastewater comes into the plant there at Mount Crawford under the bridge from 81. It comes through a 54-inch gravity line. And so it comes into what we call an influent pump station. That influent pump station there, it's 50 feet deep, and there's four pumps there that pick that water up and get it to a higher point in the plant. For the most part, the water just goes by gravity through the plant, but we did pick it up in several places. Another thing we do at that point is pick out all the stuff that shouldn't be in the pump station to begin with. So that pump station will push, we can really push about 42 to 44 MGD through that plant is about all we can do. That's about all the 54-inch force main will, our gravity line will let come through anyway. In the next section, we go through an influence screening. And what we're doing is we're picking out the smaller materials at that point. And we also send it through a pump station which takes the grit out of it. So anytime we get dirt, things of that nature in there, so the first two processes, that's what's going on there. The next part, we have four primary clarifiers. And what happens in those clarifiers is the water slows down, and we have a long residence time. So what's happening there is the heavy solids are going to the bottom of this clarifier. The real light materials are coming off the top, and we're skimming it off. And so what happens is down deep in that tank, we pump that out and send it to our solid system, and they go to what we call fermenters. And so at that point, you can guess what's happening, and it goes anaerobic. So anyway, we'll talk a little more about what they do for us and why we use them. So we can also send the plants full of physical, chemical, and biological systems. That's, you've got to do it one of three ways. You either got to physically do it, you got to chemically do it, or you got to do it with bugs. And we use all three methods. When we get hurt by one of these heavy industries, because we do have a lot of poultry and things, sometimes they can send us real heavy nitrogen and phosphorus. Sometimes we have to add chemicals to make it be able to treat. And one of the chemicals that we add sometimes is ferrochloride. We get hit real heavy from phosphorus, that will precipitate out phosphorus. So that's an option, and that's where we feed its primary clarifier. The effluent from this comes up over little weirs, and it goes to the biological process. I'll show you some kind of crazy pictures here. But on the right, that's where it's coming into. And what's going on there is there's three streams coming in right there, and that's why it looks so dirty. It looks much dirtier than it did in that primary clarifier. What we're physically doing at that point is we're recycling the bugs from later in the treatment plant. We're bringing them back up to this point and using them again to biologically eat this material. So we have 12 biological reactors and six secondary anoxit tanks. And so what's going on? The treatment system itself is called, it's a five-part, ardent foe process. And what you're doing is you come into the plant and you go anaerobic. There's no oxygen present at all. Then you go to what we call anoxic, and then you go to aerobic, and then you go back to anoxic and aerobic. So what we're doing is we're letting the bugs eat up. Each different type of bug likes a different condition. Some of them like anaerobic, some of them like aerobic, some of them like anoxic. Maybe I should explain just real quick about the difference between anaerobic and anoxic. Anaerobic means there's no oxygen present at all. There's no dissolved oxygen, there's no nitrate or nitrite. It's completely starved of oxygen. Anoxic means it has oxygen only in the form of nitrate and nitrite. Aerobic means we're feeding air to it. We've got blowers, and we're pushing air through it. So we're trying to keep all these bugs happy all the time. And it's kind of interesting, we take samples of these bugs, and we determine how old they are, what bugs are present, and who's happy and who's not. So it's as Virginia Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day in the town of Dayton. And I call this observation observance, excuse me, to the attention of all residents. And not a day nor a week is enough to thank you for what you guys do day in and day out. When we're home sleeping in our beds and you're out there protecting us. So thank you very much for what you do. Now we have a presentation by Mr. Greg Thomason, who is the executive director of HERSA. So the floor is yours, sir.
Come up closer to the microphone so everybody can hear me. Yeah. So as Mayor Jackson indicated, my name's Greg Thomason, and I'm the executive director of HERSA. I've been there since July 6th of this year. So I'm relatively new there. Sharon Foley retired at the end of July. I guess just to give you a little bit of background on HERSA, we were formed in July 15th, 1970, by concurrent resolutions from Rocky Hill County, Harrisonburg, Bridgewater, Dayton, Mount Crawford. There are member jurisdictions there who discharge to us. So we were formed to collect and treat wastewater. We were organized under the Virginia Water and Waste Authorities Act. And there are eight members of our Board of Directors. Angela Lawrence is one of our Board of Directors. She serves in a as vice chair right now. We, to tell you a little bit about us, we're, we have roughly 19.5 miles of sewer interceptors throughout the county. And we operate the North River Wastewater Treatment Facility. And that was, those two projects were completed in 1977, but there's been multiple upgrades of the wastewater treatment plant. We have a service contract and a master bond resolution, or really the documents that we operate under for person, the member jurisdictions. What I'm showing you here is the plant is, is allowed to discharge 23 million gallons per day. Is what our VPDS permit, that's what the environmental agency allows us to discharge to North River daily. And each one of these are the flow allocations, which are given to each one of the localities. Bridgewater is at 1.2, 1.72 million gallons per day. There's yours, Dayton's at 2.8 million gallons per day. Harrisonburg's 12.8 million gallons. Mount Crawford's only got 80,000 gallons. Rocky Hill County's got 5.6 million gallons. I know you're like, wow, Dayton's got 2.8. That's pretty high, isn't it? For your little town. Well, guess what you got? You got Cargill. So that's why. So what I'm also showing you there is the percent allocation used. And nobody's really very high there. Rocky Hill County was about 51 point. Well, you guys are at 65%. But you know, you're well under your allocation. So you've still got room for growth should you need to connect. You're probably thinking, well, how do you keep track of what comes from each place? There's 13 flow metering stations out there. What I kind of gave you on this first sheet, it shows you the locations of our interceptors. And it shows you the metering stations that we have. You guys have three float. Well, we own the flow metering station. We get constant results from these metering stations. So Dayton, your, your metering stations, our names for them are Dayton, 42 West and Cargill. We total up those three metering stations. And we see that constantly at the plant can tell what's going through all three of those at any given time. Last major upgrade of the plant was capacity and enhanced nutrient removal. And it was completed in December of 2010. The, the capacity increase, you went from 16 to 22 MGD. The enhanced nutrient removal, that was for DEQ in the Chesapeake Bay. You're required to do total nitrogen and phosphorus limits for the Chesapeake Bay. They're very tight here. One thing you really don't know about the valley is that some of the wastewater treatment plants that are operated up and down and go to Chesapeake Bay are the most advanced plants in the world. You won't find anybody who does quite what we do. It's very interesting. What I thought I'd do, the second sheet is our processes. And so you look at that and go like, wow, that's pretty major. Kind of problems of mine. The funny thing is a lot of our stuff isn't on there because it was never upgraded for some of the solid stuff that was done after this. So it's a pretty complicated process. The one thing that's pretty neat on the site is they have a virtual tour that Sharon put together. It's pretty cool. So, and you're always welcome to come out anytime, get ahold of us. We love to give tours to plant because it's a fascinating plant, place. If you ever want to be an engineer, there's no better place to study than that plant. I'll tell you that. So anyway, what I thought I'd do is I'd go through the processes, just basically and tell, tell you guys how we treat the wastewater. Wastewater comes into the plant there at Mount Crawford, under the bridge from 81. It comes through a 54 inch gravity line. And so it comes into what we call an influence pump station. That influence pump station there, it's 50 feet deep. And there's four pumps there that pick that water up and get it to a higher point in the plant. For the most part, the water just goes by gravity through the plant, but we did pick it up in several places. Another thing we do at that point is pick out all the stuff that shouldn't be in the, in the pump station to begin with. So that pump station will push, we can really push about 42 to 44 MGD through that plant is about all we can do. That's about all of 54 inch force main will, our gravity line will let come through anyway. In the next section, we go through an influence screening. And what we're doing is we're picking out the smaller materials at that point. And we also send it through a, a, a pump station, which takes the grit out of it. So anytime we get dirt, things of that nature in there. So the first two processes, that's, that's what's going on there. The next part, we have four primary clarifiers. And what happens in those clarifiers is the water slows down and we have a long residence time. So what's happening there is the heavy solids are going to the bottom of this clarifier. The real light materials are coming off the top and we're skimming it off. And so what happens is down deep in that tank, we pump that out and send it to our solid system. And they go to what we call fermenters. And so at that point, you can guess what's happening and it goes anaerobic. And so anyway, we'll talk a little more about what they do for us and why we use them. So we can also send the plants full of physical, chemical and biological systems. That's, you've got to do it one of three ways. You either got to physically do it, you got to chemically do it, or you got to do it with bugs. And we use all three methods. When we get hurt by one of these heavy industries, because we do have a lot of poultry and things, sometimes they can send us real heavy nitrogen and phosphorus. Sometimes we have to add chemicals to make it be able to treat. And one of the chemicals that we add sometimes is spare chloride. We get hit real heavy from phosphorus, that will precipitate out phosphorus. So that's an option. And that's where we feed its primary clarifier. The effluent from this comes up over a little weirs and it goes to the biological process. I'll show you some kind of raising pictures here. But on the right, that's where it's coming into. And what's going on there is there's three streams coming in right there. And that's why it looks so dirty. It looks much dirtier than it did in that primary clarifier. What we're physically doing at that point is we're recycling the bugs from later in the treatment plan. We're bringing them back up to this point and using them again to biologically eat this material. So we have 12 biological reactors and six secondary anoxit tanks. And so what's going on? The, the treatment system itself is called, it's, it's a five-part, ardent foe process. And what you're doing is you come into the plant and you go anaerobic. There's no oxygen present at all. Then you go to what we call anoxic and then you go to aerobic and then you go back to anoxic and aerobic. So what we're doing is we're letting the bugs eat up. Each different type of bug likes a different condition. Some of them like anaerobic, some of them like aerobic, some of them like anoxic. Maybe I should explain just a real quick about the difference between anaerobic and anoxic. Anaerobic means there's no oxygen present at all. There's no dissolved oxygen. There's no nitrate or nitrite. It's completely starved of oxygen. Anoxic means it has oxygen only in the form of nitrate and nitrite. Aerobic means we're feeding air to it. We've got blowers and we're pushing air through it. So we're trying to keep all these bugs happy all the time. And it's kind of interesting. We take samples of these bugs and we determine how old they are, what bugs are present and who's happy and who's not. So it's, there's a lot to it. It's, it's kind of fascinating. But in that junction box right there on the right, that looks kind of, where it kind of looks kind of really brown. You're getting that return sludge, you're getting the candy from the fermenter, which is from that solids that we sent over to those fermenters a few minutes ago. And then you're also getting the effluent from that primary clarifier. So after it comes through all that process train for the, for the bioreactors and the SAT basins, it goes to final clarifiers. And so just like those four up front, these final clarifiers are doing the same thing. It's slowing the water down, it's letting the solids drop, we're skimming off the stuff off the top. And so what comes out of the bottom of this thing gets fed back up into that basin. I just showed you a few seconds ago. It either goes there or we waste it. We have, we're constantly growing bugs, so we constantly got to waste them. Every minute of every day, we're growing bugs. And every minute of every day, we're wasting a few of them too. We're trying to get rid of them. And a little bit about the treatment is, as water temperatures change, you have to keep different amounts of bugs, which I know is crazy. So you can regulate the amount of bugs you got in your system. Oh no, that wasn't bad. There we go. So there's six final clarifiers. The organisms drop to the bottom of that and we call it return activated sludge. That's what the bugs are called in our term. And the port, the small portion that we waste are waste activated sludge. At this point, there's another pickup point. The, the, all those other trains were flowing by gravity to that point. At this point, we have to pick up the water and put it into a pump or put it into a filtration station. So at that point, it's filtered. This helps big time with phosphorus can only come out precipitated. It won't go up in the atmosphere. The nitrogen, where the nitrogen goes for the most part, most of it goes to the atmosphere. It's, it's pushed to nitric oxide and it's, comes out of the plant and, and as a, in the air. So anyway, this picks up the water at this point hydraulically, puts it up into a building, which has five micron filters, which will filter the water very well. Then we also, we chlorinate the water that deactivates any potential for E. Chloro, E. Coli to cause anybody to be in the creek and get sick. So that's what we do that for coronation. But at the same time, the EQ doesn't allow you to discharge chlorine to the creek because it would be bad for aquatic life. We dechlorinate. And so that contact chamber is for contact time with chlorine to make sure it gets. But the dechlorination is just a real quick, it happens like that when you add. So here's our discharge to the North River. Don't ever go down our discharge. People have tried that. It has fingers in the bottom of it and it will rip you to shreds. So I don't know, happened at some point in time and many years ago. I don't think it ended great, but anyway, they were okay. But the one on the right is, the one on the right is our effluent. The one on the left is from an earlier process off that primary clarifier. So you can see what we discharge the, to the stream, how clean it is. Solids treatment is a completely different process. There's those two fermenters. And what's going on with a fermenter is what you're physically doing is your, it's going anaerobic, of course. Material that comes off the top is full of volatile body fatty acids. And they are pumped back to that junction box. What they are is candy for the pot, for the phosphorus accumulating organisms to eat in that anaerobic zone. They don't really eat them. It's how they get their energy. It gives them a head start over other organisms that compete with them. It's kind of fascinating, but anyway, we have two anaerobic digesters. That's where you occasionally see that flame. Maybe you've seen it a couple of times from the interstate. And in under anaerobic conditions, organic material breaks down and nothing is formed. And so we use that methane to dry the sludge most of the time, but sometimes there's a little more than we can use, so we have to flare it. We have two gravity belt thickeners. That's where the waste activated sludge goes at first, goes into there. And then we have two belt filter presses that dewater further. And that sends it into that sludge dryer at that point. We do produce some cake, but most of our sludge is very dry. It's, it's like 96% solids. Here's just a history of our flow and for the last 10 years, pretty stable. We've increased some, but really hurts us is rainfall. When we get a real heavy storm, you can imagine you've got all these manholes and all these that's got little small holes in the top and there's leaks. And you know, when you got that long of an interceptor, there's a pretty good chance for rainwater to get in. So last year it was 13.7 million gallons per day was our annual average. Reason why we have to watch this is if we ever get up close to that 23, we could have to expand the plant, which is very costly. Last, the last expansion was $90 million. So pretty, pretty good chunk of money. But here's what this is, what I'm showing you, the green are our limits, what we can actually put in the creek. That's TSS, that's total suspended solids, CBOD, that's carbonation biochemical oxygen demand for five days. The other NH3, that's ammonia, of course you can't, that's short ammonia. You can see the blue there. You don't even see the blue. That's how good that plant operates. But when you get down in that blue and green right there on those last two columns, you can see it a little closer. That's our total nitrogen, total phosphorus. These plants are really, they get, they get things down to very low levels and it's hard to comply with those. Good saving graces. If we have a bad month, those are annual averages. So it's not, most of these others are daily or, you know, are constantly in compliance. We do monitor the outfall of the plant constantly. It's manned 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It's got to be. Another little thing I thought I'd show, Cargill, this is our local industries. And these are gallons of solids that we treat for them. We do treat solids at the plant for industrial facilities in charge. Of course, we get a charge for that. And so we can make a little revenue on it and it's cheaper for them than going out and land applying it. So Cargill brought us 10 million gallons last year of solids from that. That's from that facility in Temperville. That's, that's, that's their sludge from their big, from their big tanks over there. So this is kind of unit cost per thousand gallons treated. We track all kinds of chemical uses per thousand gallons. We track almost everything. But you can see our costs really haven't changed over the last 10 years. It's pretty steady. We, it's very efficient. We're about 221 per 1,000 gallons, which is very efficient. Are there any questions?
If I didn't see the picture, I'd screw you, make beer.
You come out, you'll, you'll be sure we're not making. I should have, if I would have, I told somebody was coming here and of course they sent me a picture of the bugs. I'd already said the presentation, but I wish I'd have had that in there because our, our plant depends on bugs. Really does. The bulk of our treatment, it's an Evan Page, it's not to use chemicals. Bugs are free.
Between beer and candy, I think. What, I did have a question there. You see it mentioned about discharge and everything. I know for the benefit, I know we've got a really state of the art plant down there. But what, what's the impact been for like the Chesapeake Bay watershed implementation plan faced through? Has that had any impact at all in operations or any future costs?
The, the, if you look at, if you look at us as a sector, we, we have like a general permit. And the wastewater treatment plants have given the bulk of the cuts. It's other sectors that just haven't really given a lot of the cuts, you know? So they've kind of turned the wastewater treatment plant down to where we can give no more. It's almost like we've gotten rid of all nitrogen and phosphorus at this point. There are certain, there are certain fractions of it that you just can't completely get rid of. You couldn't get completely all the nitrogen out of the water. It, I think it's improved the Chesapeake Bay over time, but the wastewater treatment plants have far exceeded what they felt they could do. And we generate credits. We actually sell credits from the plant because we discharge so much cleaner than we are actually required to. We do sell credits. It's not a lot of revenue. For the $90 million.
Better than paying into it. So it's good. Yeah. Right. No, it's, it's good to know. I think it's just important because that is a big topic here. I know that you've been going through phase one and two already. So it's, and then now we're on with the ag sector and kind of reduce those runoff issues.
So how much sludge is discharged?
How much sludge?
Everything that you're taking out of it.
How much sludge or nitrogen?
No, and you're processing everything out of the water.
Right.
How much is that?
Oh, how many tons of solids? That's a good question. I was doing some numbers here a little while ago.
It's got to be a crazy high number.
Yeah, but, but we, but they're very hot. There's a lot of water. So a lot of what we're doing is taking that water out because they only give us something like 5% solids. So I, I think probably about 13,000 wet tons is probably what we're doing. It confuses it a little bit because you've got a class B solid, which is a cake. That's what Hoth puts on fields. And we also produce a class A, which is 96%. So the, the class B is only 16% solids. The class A is 96% solids. So comparing the two, you're looking at probably about 15,000 tons of about 16% solids in class B cake.
And then are those solids just taken to our local dump or what?
The class B solids, oh, language wise.
Okay.
Class A solids, we've had an agreement intermissed with somebody across the mountain that's been using that on a side farm. Problem is some of it, he's not been able to take all of it. He's kind of stopped. He's kind of made me nervous. I've got to find another help for it. It's, it's kind of a, not a lot of people create a class A. There's not a lot of people that want it. It's great, but here. So most of it right now, we use this data.
I'll just add that they've been very innovative and on top of things. So then the dryer saves a lot of money in terms of the way they are constantly revisiting what improvements they could make to save money or to improve effectiveness or efficiency. So appreciate that.
I need a motion to approve the minutes for the regular town council meeting of September 13th, 2021, in a special call meeting about October 7th, 2021.
Sir, moved.
Mr. Dijack? Miss Estes, are there any amendments to the minutes? Have a roll call, Ms. Hall?
Aye.
Ms. Hoover?
Aye.
Mr. Seward?
Aye.
Ms. Mathias?
Aye.
Ms. Estes? Mayor Jackson?
Aye. The only action item we have this evening is the appointment of Aaron Swindle to the unexpired planning commission term to expire June 30th, 2025. Council met on October 7th to do interviews. Mr. Swindle was interviewed for the planning commission. Applications will be accepted for the council position until 4:30 on October 22nd. So I need a motion to appoint Aaron Swindle to the unexpired planning commission term to expire June 30th, 2025.
Sir, moved.
Mr. Dijack? Miss Estes? Do we have any discussion on that? Roll call, please, Ms. Hall?
Seward?
Aye.
Ms. Estes? Ms. Hoover?
Aye.
Mr. Dijack?
Aye.
Ms. Mathias?
Aye.
Mayor Jackson?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you all. And then we have staff reports. We'll move on to Ms. Lawrence.
Sure. My report starts on page 13. We did get the categorical exclusion that we had asked for, for the water plant. So we don't have to go through the environmental impact study for that additional land that we needed for the plant. As you know, last month they started including an update on all the capital projects and they are there. Are there any questions? I have no, no items for consideration at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, Treasury report?
The treasurer's staff report is attached to your agenda packet there with the financials, budget versus actual. One thing to add, staff is currently working with Rocky Hill County regarding the real estate taxes. The information is being reconciled. So hopefully they will be with us soon and you can get those bills out.
Thanks for all your work on the audit that's going.
Yay. I think we're done.
Now we'll go to Chief Trout, who is joining us virtually this evening for his report.
Let's get him up there first.
Hey, good afternoon, council, Mr. Mayor. Before you is my report. I do have a few things I wanted to highlight before any questions, if you had them. I would like to right now recognize Officer Dollar, who has retired after 22 years of law enforcement service. We'll be having something for him on October 29th. So I'll put that out once we have everything finalized. An item for consideration. So I have recently completed the, the coronavirus emergency grant through the Department of Criminal Justice Services. It was a, it's a free grant. There's no match. So I've completed that, sent that to Angela for her two signatures and then we can get that sent off. The other grant I'm discussing tonight is the Burn Justice Grant Assistance Program. So Burn Justice came out with an equipment grant. Equipment grants are actually few and far between. So I was kind of interested this came out. The grants due October 22nd. I'm about halfway through the grant. I'm almost completed it to the point where I sent it to Angela for her signatures. I'm asking council to consider and I guess a budget amendment and approve me to go forward with the grant. So the grant will give us $25,000. No, not 25,000. The grant could be up to $25,000. The town has to cover 25% of that grant. I, I'm looking to replace our portable radio system. We've been having a lot of problems with the one we have. We've brought it to ECC, discussed the issues. We're not the only ones. Four other towns are also working on this grant as well to replace their portable radios. So I've gotten quote, a quote from Clear Communications on the radio system. All in all, the radios and related equipment are $33,515.59. We are getting $9,600 trade-in value on the radios we currently have. So in total, it would be under around $9,000, under $10,000 to replace the radio system that we currently have. Does anybody have any questions on that? Anything you want to ask?
Just ask clarifying question. Which of those grants is also included with the key card system?
That's the coronavirus grant through the Department of Criminal Justice Services.
Okay. So just for clarification, as you know, we have in our capital budget to replace the key or to add a key card system in here. Justin came across this other grant that could also include the key card system for this building, which would allow us then to take our budgeted money to put key cards in some of the other buildings that are not as well secured. So there may be, we're not asking for a budget amendment tonight. That would have to be.
Yeah, sorry.
It may be something that we can absorb with that because we're doing the key card. But I wanted Justin to make sure that you all knew before the grant is finalized, that we may come back to you for additional funds later on if the grant is received and it's not absorbed somewhere else.
I'm sorry?
I said I'm fine with it. I think that you all should have it. Anything you all need, honestly.
Unless we hear anything, we'll go ahead and apply. That grant doesn't require a resolution or anything from council. So we'll go ahead and apply for it if there's people that want us to. And we'll come back to you when we get, find out about all three of the grants that are current, all four of the grants that are currently in right now.
Oh yeah. I just want to clarify a question there, Chief. You had mentioned, because I think it's a great concept.
Oh, yeah, I, I just want to clarify a question there, Chief. Uh, you had mentioned, uh, because I think it's a great concept, uh, but you had mentioned the, uh, that other municipalities are unsurprisingly trying to, uh, figure out the radio systems too and update those. Is, is there any potential or does the grant give any parameters that, uh, like for, uh, a joint or regional approach, uh, for, for something similar?
No, so they are individual. Um, however, we're all writing in our grants that this is a, um, multi-jurisdictional request.
Okay.
Um, I know I, I've spoken with, uh, another agency, I'm not going to say their name on, on this, but, um, they are having the same issues. The problem with them is, is that, you know, they're not small agencies like the towns are, so funding is a problem for them.
Sure.
Funding would also be a problem for us, obviously, if I didn't have this grant opportunity. So the grant really, uh, helps us to achieve, you know, receiving the new radio systems as well. So that's why I bring it up to you all.
Excellent. Great. Thanks for that. Yeah, appreciate you finding that grant too.
And I just want to comment, um, Chief's done a phenomenal job in searching these grants. Anybody's written a grant is not an easy process. So the amount of money that we have saved and been able to buy new equipment for the police department through these grants has been just fantastic. You know, the vehicle last year, the tasers, I mean, just, and it just continues to go on. So thank you for your extra efforts in searching and applying for all these grants.
You're welcome. Um, if, so no, if everybody, if nobody has any other questions on those, uh, I can just give you a real quick, um, highlight of what's going on with the other grant.
Go ahead.
Okay, so the cops hiring grant, I contacted the office. Um, as everybody was aware, they were looking at possibly a government shutdown, trying to pass the budget. So that's kind of put things a little behind. Uh, the answer I got when I had contacted them was they're having technical difficulties and that they would be announcing this fall. You know, me and Angela kind of chuckled about that because she said fall starts, what, December twenty-second, Angela?
It gets over December twenty-first. He thought he'd have it in this month sometime.
Yeah, yeah, I am hoping it does come in now. Uh, everything's kind of squared away that we do get a call, uh, this month. I'm hopeful. So, um, if any, if nobody has any other questions about that, uh, do you have any other questions on my report?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
All right, Ms. Lawrence for Public Works?
Uh, the Public Works report is on page eighteen. Um, the report, I just noticed a thing says King Street walking path. As you know, that is not a walking path at this point. It's, um, was going to be a walking path, but things didn't work out. So right now they're just, they did, um, fix some drainage issues that had come to our attention. Um, and we checked it the last two storms and they're good. Um, and then they put gravel down just to keep the erosion at bay. Um, but we have not moved forward with any other things going up to Cook's Creek, um, or going, how to get across Cook's Creek. So, uh, there's that. Um, the flail mowing ducks, um, came in, but the mower, as I put in my report, is on back order and back order again. So we got another call the other day. Um, in fact, the prices are going up and they tried to tell us that we'll have to pay the new price and we're telling them, no, we ordered it a long time ago. So there's that. I mean, just Public Works did a phenomenal job of, um, one, getting the, the stuff ready for, or getting the bench and stuff in at Dove Park, but also the, they just, I mean, you guys saw them here at five o'clock in the morning and they were the last ones to leave at about five-thirty at night. Um, they did an amazing job, um, of just keeping everything going. We have had nothing but just absolutely fabulous comments from vendors, um, new vendors, former vendors, about how well organized everything went, how smoothly it went. Um, and I should have said in my report, thank you to the council members who did volunteer, who were there from four o'clock in the morning, or four-thirty in the morning until five-thirty at night, and the ones that came and went throughout the day. Uh, we can't do it with volunteers or our dedicated staff, so. Appreciate that.
You want to talk, sorry, you want to talk about, before we get into water, about the, uh, what they did about cleaning the lines downtown with?
Oh, yes, thank you. So, yeah, sorry, that wasn't done last month. So, um, we spent, as you know, a lot of time and a lot of money on the Mill Street project. In the first significant rain we got, there was still some pooling of water on Main Street. Um, and so they did do some work around it, and then the last two downpours we got were not as much, but, um, we did hire the same company that works on our sewer and water lines to come in and camera the line starting in front of hopeful things dressed up for, threads going down tunnel alley basically to forty-two. Um, and so they camera, they cleaned it out. And so one of the issues, there was a, um, a hubcap that was pried into this line, they're eighteen-inch lines. There was a hubcap, so that would be holding back water because they said it was just crammed in there. And then probably half the pipe was mud and dirt and sludge and silt. Um, so they cleaned all of that out. I mean, really, if you looked at the pipe, half of it bottom half was just nothing but mud. So there's a big pile over at the plant right now where they did that. And, um, and then there's a lot of roots. There's about five trees right along the fence on, none on the beat outside of the fence um, by the parking lot there. And so a lot of roots have gotten in there. Um, they're afraid that if they lined that pipe where it is, that would shrink the capacity because the lining takes up some space and we're probably at capacity there. So the idea is to watch it for, or hoping for a really good downpour, so we can make sure. What happens is the water comes from fuzzy duck, goes down to the cottage, crosses the street where that crosswalk is, and then goes and pools there. So we've been keeping a close eye on it, but we think, um, it's got to be much, much better. Um, so I have also had, as I reported last month, an engineer come down and look. Um, there really is just that one. So I think we put, what, eight or twelve? I forget how many drop inlets on, on Mill and Main Street during that project. From Mill Street all the way downtown, there's one drop inlet and probably not big enough as it is to get the water off the road in a hurry. And, um, so eventually I think we'll be talking about doing another project, hopefully not the scale, it's Mill Street project. Um, and hopefully quicker since it is a downtown district, but we are working on those downtown issues as well.
But in, in the pictures after they cleaned out those lines, I mean, it looks like a brand-new line. I mean, I thought it was something that they installed new because they were so plain. They were in there with, um, brooms sweeping what little bit of silt and stuff that was in there out. I mean, it, it was pretty phenomenal what they did for the amount of stuff that was in there.
Yeah. So hopefully that'll make a huge impact. And like I said, we're still watching that as well as the water that kind of pools where the sump pump and those other rates are behind High Street and, um, behind the shops downtown, so.
Nangin wire?
Water report is on page nineteen. Um, there is an item um, for consideration. So our CIP had a budget for twenty-five thousand dollars for a mobile generator.
Yep.
And there's, I know there's more technical knowledge up here than I have, but that's no longer possible between the, um, the new requirements for generators and the supply chain and everything else. Uh, we can't get a mobile generator for, um, for anything that we can afford, nor is it really recommended at this point. So, uh, we looked at, um, just putting in a stationary generator at well four, which is where we need it the most right now, and then next year coming back in the CIP and adding them for the other wells that don't have them um, and the tower. Um, and so the price for the one, and we have worked the best we can right now. I mean, we'll get, we can get another quote, but it's, um, thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven ninety-five. So, um, I need, we can, we can deal with this at another time. If you guys give me the go-ahead to go ahead and order this, there is uh, the water department does have a contingency in their budget. This is actually out of the capital projects budget, twenty-five instead of twenty. So, um, I'm not sure if we have some extra money in capital projects, which we probably will from the King Street project that isn't going to be built this year, then it's a wash. We can use that for that project. If not, I'll have to come back and ask you for contingency funds, but, um, from.
Did you put some up for the dog park? Just take it out of that? Put some point five K up for the land?
We are, for the parks, we're putting money in every year so that we can save money for when land gets available. I don't think, I that's what's happened in the past with councils that they draw from a long-term project. That's what happened in Mill Street. They kept, they built this building instead of building the Mill Street.
Seven point six million dollars we got from the government, but y'all put that on the water plant.
Right. It's, it's not a matter of not having money. It's a matter of where, that it's not, not currently budgeted.
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure, you know, it's not in the current budget at this price, but, um, it's about twelve thousand dollars more.
Yeah.
But it's something we need to do.
Yeah.
Yes.
Can't have the well go down.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, they've lived through that before, so, yes. Yeah, I, I mean, I think, I'm sorry? Well, yeah, I mean, we'll have to come back and, and add additional. Yeah. Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I, I mean, I'm comfortable with going ahead and just even being able to find that twelve to thirteen thousand to make it happen. It's, it's, it's necessary. We already planned for it in the CIP. We just need to adjust the price and, yeah.
Well, and something, uh, again, this is because we separated the capital funds out of general capital, water and zero capital. There's not as much, uh, actually, there is flexibility because our equipment didn't cost as much.
Yeah.
We might have a use for that money. I think we're good right now. I will come back to you if we need to transfer some money from one fund to another and get you to approve that.
So one question, is that the generator cost, is that with the remote monitoring? Because that would probably save them from having to run out in the middle of the night because it would alert them.
Is that another?
That was eleven hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can't answer what, I don't believe that was included. I think that's additional.
That's a separate one.
So it would be another, but I, I would suggest that they do so.
Yes.
Especially with everything else that's going to, um, with the SCADA system upgrades that we've had and, and with the new plant, they'll be able to do a lot.
And that'll tie into state as well.
We're going to have to pay two hours to come in and flip.
Exactly.
Yeah. I'll double check with that and we'll, uh, keep working on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Ms. Hall? Community development?
Community development staff report is on page twenty-two of your agenda packet, and I do not have anything to add, but I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has any. Yes, I talked to her and explained to her that I'm out of the office, but I'll get back with it.
And I am, I'm not sure Krista knows this, but somebody from Eddie Edwards or Sign Company came in last week, so I discussed it with him as well. They did not. Yeah, they.
I just want to see progress because they ask me every time I go in there to buy my cheese.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hall. Ms. Lawrence, economic development?
Yeah. I get tired of hearing myself talk. Economic development report starts on page twenty-three. Um, we, like I said, amazing, um, just people have gone out of their way to email us or to add on Facebook how well organized the event was. Um, it was so much calmer in the office. Maggie left on time Friday night, didn't work overtime that week except for Saturday. Um, she's working, as you know, with the Main Street group, which is meeting again on the twenty-eighth. And I'll, I guess Brad for good talk, but that, his report. The one item for consideration or discussion is the Christmas parade. Uh, we've already reached out to the marching band director at Turner Ashby, and there's a district band competition that day, which is usually the first Saturday of December, so we wouldn't have a marching band, presuming everybody in the district will be at that. And I know that was going to happen last year too. So, um, we could either look at switching the date or not doing a parade again and driving Santa around in the gator like we did last year uh, with Maggie driving this. So last year, we did take Santa, came to town, and we drove him around. Thank you, Suzie, for her golf cart, actually. That's what it was. And, um, anyway, or we could change it, or we could do a parade without a band director. I did call Bridgewater because they hadn't advertised theirs and, uh, with Bridgewater Foods changing ownership, and they're the ones who coordinate that and out the town. There's not a parade in Bridgewater this year. So we usually double back and people go down there at ten o'clock. Some of the floats are there at ten o'clock, and then they come up here for the evening parade. So, uh, without a Parks and Recreation Committee meeting right now, um, we just need to get some direction as to how strongly people feel about a Christmas parade.
Yeah, if you're going to work on it and have people come to it and like get more businesses to show up, I think it'd be a good idea. We just had twenty-five, we can't use COVID or anything for the reason, because we just had twenty-five thousand people in our town. I think that's part of our, it's became a tradition here. People like it, even though it's the smallest one probably in the whole area. It's kind of embarrassing, but it's still sweet and people enjoy it. It's better than just a golf cart. We can change the date. You can call, there's other groups that can play music or I don't know. I think we should have it. I think we need to have our Christmas party too. That's just me.
No, I agree. I, I like to see us do the parade.
That'd be sensible.
Yeah.
All right. I will say, I don't think it's a parade without a marching band.
Yeah.
So, well, I was, I told her to start calling and seeing if there's some small marching bands with the colleges or something like that, that might be able to, or at least the jazz.
Yeah.
I don't know. I know last year when we, the past couple of years, we tried to get at least a choir to come. Um, of course, they couldn't do it last year because of COVID. They couldn't sing, and I don't know if choirs are singing now or not. Um, that's more probably appropriate for the tree lighting. If we're going to do a parade, then have them at the end, but maybe we can get some a choir that will carol during the parade. Um, so, um, Maggie can work on that.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence.
I wonder if Maggie's on TV tonight.
Who is on TV right now?
Yeah, did we lose a, did we lose a feed?
Oh, we just, uh, turned it off so it wasn't distracting from you all. What Suzie needs to watch, they're all watching.
Yeah.
Okay, they're still. Okay.
All right, see, we have Ms. Brooke Hannah, who is filling in for Mr. Bowman.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any enlightenment for us this evening?
Mr. Mayor, I do not.
Well, thank you for coming out this evening. We appreciate it.
Thank you all.
I do have a question for the other, for the other guy, or I don't know if you know, but I would like to know how much it costs to do the research and to write an ordinance. Because I had sent you pictures of the signs at the park, and I told you I was going to ask at the meeting. I would just like to know how much it costs for y'all to research something that we and then to, how much we're being charged with taxpayers' dollars, something like that. Uh, he can send me an email or something. I doubt you know right now, but.
I'm sure. And, uh, do you want to know about a specific ordinance? Because I know that it does depend on.
For the, uh, the parks.
The parks.
Because y'all said there wasn't any signs at the parks saying, couldn't be there after dark. Y'all didn't believe me, and I sent her pictures of them. They are, uh, they're on both the shelters at the Purple Park and at Cook's Creek. It's always been that way since, uh, my childhood. And I brought up, we need to extend the time because Harrisonburg and Stanton and Gypsy Hill, they're like ten and eleven o'clock. Instead of being in the wintertime, you get off, you can't go to the park at five o'clock in the wintertime. So I would just like to know from you how much it costs to research that specific thing and how much it's going to cost us to do an ordinance when there's already signs there. That's all.
Noted, and I'll pass them on.
Yeah, you can email me. That's fine.
As a reminder, that issue got, um, referred to the Parks and Recreation and Beautification Committee, which didn't meet because, um, we're waiting for the council appointments, but I think the mayor's going to say some things. Um, generally, with the research, Krista and I do the research and send something over formatted as much as possible and have, um, Jordan.
I just want to know the total cost, that's all.
All right, now we'll move to community reports with Mr. Dijack for economic community development.
Sure. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thanks, everyone, for coming out tonight. Uh, I, I'll just kind of echo, uh, uh, Ms. Lawrence's and, uh, the mayor's earlier comments there on Dayton Days. I mean, what a, what a great time this was, guys. So I mean, I, I just want to take stock, celebrate a little bit because this is, you know, really about returning back to a little sense of normalcy and then really bringing that community spirit back. And you all definitely showed that. So thank you to the residents, to business owners or vendors, and many of you represent here, volunteers and staff. Absolutely. PD, Public Works, uh, don't tell Public Works I give them any credit here, guys, but, uh, no, but I appreciate everything that, uh, staff's done. Uh, you know, and Maggie, good, and all for, uh, for this being the first time around for many, uh, staff members, uh, it was great. Feedback was fantastic. And it's just, there, there is a buzz in the air, and the weather couldn't have been any better. So I think it, uh, it was great. So, uh, that's what makes Dayton special. So it's, it's great, and I'm glad that you will be continuing to build on that and work on our, uh, uh, you know, the parade as well. So just thank you for everyone for doing what you're doing. And, uh, and I think building upon that, you know, that, that kind of takes us to the next point, which, uh, as Lawrence mentioned, uh, the, uh, Main Street discussion. Uh, so date Main Street, we are going to, uh, that, that meeting will occur on the twenty-eighth at six fifteen, so that's, uh, on Thursday. Uh, come on out. Uh, we'll be having a discussion on the mission and vision statement and talking about, uh, potential next steps, uh, for, for really organizing that. And again, it'll be a public-private, non- And again, it'll be a public, private, non-private partnership. I mean, that's the key here. Uh, so you get the best of all worlds, you know, coordination with, uh, with the town, but with, uh, private business owners, nonprofits and residents, everyone coming together. And it's beyond just Main Street. That's just the name because that's the, uh, uh, you know, Virginia Main Street Organization Group. Uh, but it will encompass our forty-two businesses, those on Mason Street, the market and everyone in between. So, uh, uh, excited. We're really building on that. Uh, we had, uh, Julie Cloud, uh, Cloud from, uh, formerly from Stanton downtown and, uh, and from, uh, Harrisonburg, uh, downtown Renaissance spoke. Um, uh, on, uh, September twenty-third, that was really great to get insight, uh, from, uh, from, uh, someone who's done it. Um, and, uh, given us some lessons there. So excited to build upon that and thank you for that. Um, and I did want to take an opportunity to, uh, highlight one of our, uh, uh, business successes. Again, I know we talked about Best of the Valley last, uh, month and, uh, we actually have an expansion. So Tic Tac Toys is officially expanded into the former Cheese Place. So that, that's the story that keeps on giving, you know, there you go. So, yes, Emily, I, I, I agree. I love getting my cheese there too. And there you go. It's but, uh, I'm telling you, it's great that that making room for Tic Tac Toys to expand, uh, that's fantastic. So, uh, congratulations to them and hopefully we'll get a, get a formal recognition out there soon. And, uh, uh, so although it was tough, it's gonna be tough to top that ribbon cutting from the, uh, cheese place. Uh, boy, they really with Mau Sears and everything. So it was, uh, that was great. So, uh, so thank you for that. And last, I'll just, uh, highlight, uh, to this month, in addition to the police, uh, week, uh, it's, uh, Bicycleist and Pedestrian Awareness Month and Community Planning Month. So I'm gonna take that as our plug because it ties in with Main Street. And it also ties in with our community input survey, which Ms. Hall has diligently prepared, uh, with the planning commission's, uh, coordination. Uh, so please take the survey. Uh, it'll take you fifteen minutes. Uh, we've got it online. Uh, I've got it here at Town Hall. Just come out, uh, fill it out and give us, uh, your input on what, uh, you know, get the pulse of the town and what we can do in the next, uh, five years. Cause that's what we're gonna start next year is that comprehensive plan. Uh, this is our chance to chart our course and our vision here in town and uh, really maintain what we have and build upon it. So thank you. I'll get off my soapbox, but, uh, good time to be in Dayton.
If I could add a couple of things since he brought it up, Tic Tac Toys, I think it's gonna do an official grand opening ribbon cutting on Customer Appreciation Day, which is, I think, the second Saturday of the month of November. And, um, there's also a yarn shop that will be opening in there too. You guys have a new business?
Yeah.
You know where to find me after. The dawn's on you.
Oh, survey.
Yeah.
Why is it not being mailed out to the residents that pay the water bill? A lot of people aren't online. We see the Facebook looks is down, but I don't really go there. It doesn't always come on your wall. But like, I notice we have to like call y'all to have it sent to us. Why isn't it, like, I already know that it can get to the ones that pay the water bills. And I know I added myself to that list for like the information that comes from the town. We need to send that out. Because if they're not on Zoom and they're not on Facebook, they don't even know it's in the office to have it sent to them. So I was just wondering why it's not being mailed out because I want to have more influence from people outside of the town telling us what we need to do on our CIP if we're not bothering to ask people in our town. I just want to make sure they have a chance to get it. A lot, it's not everybody's online. Like dad, he's not gonna, he's not, he does not get online. There's plenty more like him.
Yeah, but we did, it, it, Ms. Lawrence's point, yeah, we definitely, uh, it was in the newsletter and so that'll be, uh, and, and again, it's on, so we're hitting them. I'm sorry.
It's again online. Not everybody.
No, no, but I mean, the, the newsletter was mailed out to everyone. Yeah, yeah. So it, it was definitely in there. So that's why we're, we're hitting it up on multimedia. So it's gonna be both online and and, uh, and like, so we're telling people can call in or, or walk in and, and take it. So, and I'll tell, a simple reason is it's, it's thick. It's, uh, so that's why we're trying to hit it both ways, but it's open for a while. So.
I, I don't think that was, and actually that was before I got on council, before the last one that was done, but I don't think it was mailed. Yeah.
May, maybe we'll get some favorable press coverage from people out there to spread the word too.
Survey before it's Harrisonburg, people deciding what happens here. I'd rather it be local people.
Oh, it's gonna be everyone. Yeah, like I said, hard copies are here.
Should be us first though.
The, the nice thing about the online and, um, is that it tabulates and we can sort by spread. We'll put any that come in hard copy on the same spreadsheet, but this automatically goes straight into a spreadsheet and then we can sort, so we can sort by where somebody lives and analyze just people who live in Dayton versus people who live outside and work.
And substance questions.
What's that?
I saw, I saw that part of the survey. I'm just wondering, I just want to make sure our people know and have a voice for outsiders. Cause I know with the last survey, if you looked at the paper ones that came back and the ones that came back electronically, they were the exact same words for a lot of the same people. So it was like multiple people putting in. And then we ended up with a greenway when it was like thirty-six people that wanted it. So I don't know. I'm just a little concerned. This makes me weary because I want our residents.
Oh, yeah, it was absolute. We're hitting them up both ways. Yep, it was definitely in newsletter. Open here.
Krista and Bradford can probably address this too, but I believe there's several public in-person, public meetings that will probably also be on, right for people to give input.
Yes.
So the survey is not the only way for people to give input and get involved as well.
Correct. Yeah, this is the kickoff. That's, that's it. It's a kickoff. Yep.
Any other questions for Mr. Digest? All right, finance committee did not meet this month. Uh, back to Mr. Digest for infrastructure.
No report, sir.
Thank you very much. All right, Parks, Recreation, Beautification, Mr. Seward is gonna be the new chair of that department. So, or that commission, so floor is yours.
No report.
And then Personnel, Ms. Matthias will be the Chair of Personnel. Is she hearing us?
I do.
There you go.
I do not have a report though. We did not meet. So no report this month.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Hoover for Police?
Uh, Police did not meet this month, so no report.
Thank you very much. And as others have said, the, um, Dayton Days was fantastic. Um, you know, talking to everybody that was here. I talked to a lady that lived in North Carolina and, uh, she had heard all these years about Dayton Days and she came up, Dayton, Harrisonburg, came down for Dayton Days. So, you know, when you hear, when people are hearing about it all the way down to North Carolina and taking their weekend to come up here to Dayton Days, that's pretty special. So, you know, thanks again. And I've said this multiple times. Our town, you know, when you go to these conferences and stuff and talk to other mayors, the collaboration we have between staff, all departments is fantastic and that is not the norm. I mean, that is an exception here. So thanks for everything you guys do together as a team. And then, um, you know, we already said earlier that, uh, Officer Dollar had retired. Um, so we wish him the, the best of luck and we will have something for him on the twenty-ninth of October. Any other council members with comments? All right, we have no unfinished business or new business. Time for public comments. Um, we have.
Hey Susan, I have some, uh, reference letters from you from, uh, Lulu. Did I hand it to everybody else? I didn't get to, to you. Would you like me to leave them here or screenshot and email them to you? We didn't get them the other night. She handed them to me the night to give them, but that's the lawyer lady and not you. Been in the last.
So what was the question though?
Then I have some paperwork for you. Did you want me to leave for you or screenshot it and send it to you? It's reference letters for, uh, for, um, Karen Bender that we didn't get the other night, but she gave me today and but you weren't here. I didn't name one of you. So I have them for you. I gave them to everybody else.
Krista can scan them and email them too, if you'd like.
Yeah.
Yeah, that will be fine. Yeah, cause I'm gonna be back Friday evening, hopefully. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, so we have public comments. We have two people signed up, Robin Long. All right, thank you very much. And Ms. Deb Craig?
My name is Deb Craig and I live at three sixty-three College Street. Can you turn the microphone around? Sorry. Kudos for everyone on Dayton Days. While some of you may wish I would just go away, I couldn't. The communication came to me after the last meeting with a picture. It was hot, it was hard or impossible to ignore. Being a town council member is not for the faint of heart. It may drive you you to a heightened level by ignoring Robert rules of order or even partake of a Bud Light while conducting town business. Neither are really meeting ethical standards. How we all experience laughs and judgments. I'm gonna entrust to you, Mr. Mayor, out of respect for the entire town council, this envelope. I trust you will speak to this person and publicly acknowledge it has been addressed by the same, and I didn't know what to call it, but punishment served to Councilwoman Estes. We can all agree, we would not want our coworkers or employees drinking on the job. Especially me, since I work with lots of people that take care of you in healthcare. Personally, I would like to see both parties have a clean slate. However, this decision is out of my hand and in yours. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so that's the conclusion of our public comments. I need a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting. Is that this second? On favor? All in favor?
All right.
Me adjourned.